Motion to approve the agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we will have the student board representative interviews. We have three students this evening. We have Noah, Caitlin, and Yoshimi. Thank you. They're here in front. And you want us to go in alphabetical order? Do you want to decide yourselves or do you want us to meet and pick a name? Okay, we'll have Noah go first, since he is Noah. He'll break the ice for us. And Noah, we have five questions and each board member will ask a question. Jeannie, if you want to start on the end with question number one, and we'll work this way.
Madam President, could they give us their last name also, first name and last name?
Why don't you say, say and spell your name?
Okay, Noah Dempsey, N-O-A-H-D-E-M-P-S-E-Y. And I will be senior. I think that's a good thing.
Oh, you want me to go first or that we should?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Noah, can you tell us why you are interested in serving as a student board representative for our school district?
Yeah, so my reasonings are really similar to last time. I think that it's a great way for me to express the needs and the concerns of the students in our district. And it's, it's a, it's a way of making their voice heard better to the board. And it gives me a better opportunity to interact with those individuals as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Noah. Noah, what do you see as the main responsibilities and duties of a student board representative?
The main duties are to advocate for the students and what they need. Everyone has their designated person that comes to you, and the student board reps are who the students come to when they need something brought up to the board.
Great. Thanks, Noah.
Noah, how would you advocate for the needs and concerns of your fellow students to the school board?
I would, like I did last time, if there was a concern, I would make sure that it was a concern that needs to be brought to the board first or needs to be brought to the board. And then I would go through the chain of command, which is teacher, principal, and then the board.
Thank you.
And Jason, I put you down for the next question, but I don't know if you have a copy of the question or not.
I do, and I'm glad you did because my copy, I can't see number 10. So, so it's number six, correct? How would you?
We, so there's it. We need to retype them out, so the original list is not applied.
Okay, so. How would you gather feedback? Okay. So Noah, how would you gather feedback, feedback and input from the student body to ensure that you accurately represent their opinions and their perspectives?
I would just make sure that I ask as many people as possible when it comes to a concern, if a concern, concern is brought up by one student, I'd want to make sure that it was a concern that is, if it's something big enough that it's faced by more than one student. So I would just make sure that I have a good set of data.
Thank you.
Finally, Noah, what do you hope to accomplish or contribute during your time as a student board representative? And how do you plan to measure your success in this role?
Okay, I think that what my main goal is that I want to continue the work that I did in the last term, which was to advocate for students, every student, and their needs. And I would measure my success by personal metrics to see what I could get done. And then to also make sure that what I got done really helped people. I think that I can measure that back to last term, I was really proud of myself for advocating for mental health, and that's something that I'll continue to do. And any other need that needs to be met.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Those are all our questions. Thank you.
My name is Yoshimi Garcia, Y-O-S-H-I-M-I Garcia, G-A-R-C-I-A.
Could you repeat the last name, please?
Garcia.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going into junior year.
Jeannie, will you start?
Yes. Can you tell us why you are interested in serving as a student board representative for our school district?
I feel like I can make a difference in every student's life by being a student board representative. I feel like I represent a broad spectrum of students, and I think I can advocate their voice well. I can advocate for them well.
Thank you. What do you see as the main responsibilities and duties of a student board representative?
I see that they, their main responsibilities are speaking, being the voice of the student body at, in the school district. So that could mean like saying, maybe we need more of this at like a game or something like, it would make the high school experience better, or something like that. Like, it would just make their life better.
How would you advocate for the needs and concerns of your fellow students to the school board?
I would make sure that it's a problem that needs to be solved and like multiple students see it as a problem that needs to be solved. I would make sure it's very important, and I would bring it up to all of you and hope that you feel the same way.
Thank you.
This is Jason. So how would you gather feedback and input from the student body to ensure that you accurately represent their opinions and their perspectives?
I would try to gather as much input from anyone that I could about the problem. So I would make sure the problem is relevant enough to bring to the school board, and then I would ask as many people as I can to see their perspective on it, so I can accurately advocate for the student body.
Thank you.
Finally, what do you hope to accomplish or contribute during your time as a student board representative? And how do you plan to measure your success in that role?
I think I plan to contribute just really important like input from the student body and just things that maybe don't get heard to the school board because maybe students don't come to school board meetings. So I would take their like comments and present them to you. Obviously, if they're important enough. And then I would measure my success by seeing how much I myself can change. So like in the school body or whatever, yeah. So I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Yoshimi.
Thank you.
My name is Caitlin Morrow, C-A-I-T-L-Y-N-M-O-R-R-O-W, and I'm also going to be senior.
Your last name one more time, please.
Morrow, M-O-R-R-O-W.
Thank you.
And what grade?
Senior.
Welcome, Caitlin. Can you tell us why you are interested in serving as a student board representative for our school?
I'm interested because I think that I'd make good representation of what our school like is about and how, if they had a problem, I'd be able to bring it to you guys because of, like, I have friends everywhere, so I'll be able to take their problems and bring it to you guys if there is any.
What do you see as the main responsibilities and duties of a school board representative?
To be able, I think my main responsibility would be able to connect students to the student board and the community, and just to make it so we're all like a whole rather than one idea and another idea.
Okay.
How would you advocate for the needs and concerns of your fellow students to the school board?
I would just try and help, and if I hear something that needs to be improved, I would bring it to the attention. And if there's like multiple people that bring that up, that it does get resolved.
Thank you.
This is Jason. How would you gather feedback and input from the student body to ensure you accurately represent their opinions and their perspectives?
Kind of like I said before, whereas if I hear more than one, like a problem or something that needs to be resolved, I'll kind of keep note of it, and then at a meeting, I'll bring it up.
Thank you.
Finally, what do you hope to accomplish or contribute during your time as a student board representative? And how do you plan to measure your success in that role?
I hope to accomplish that if there's anything that people right now are seeing as a problem, that for my senior year, I'll be able to help anyone younger than me have a better time during high school, or just have a good time during high school. And I'd measure my success if, if I actually do find something that it will be resolved and, yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you, all three of you, for your application and your interview. Everyone did a wonderful job. And now the board is going to adjourn into executive session for two purposes. The first, under revised code of Washington forty-two thirty-one hundred and ten subsection one H, action may follow, or action to follow, H, to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office. However, any interview of such candidate and final action appointing a candidate to elective office shall be in a meeting open to the public. By its code of Washington forty-two thirty-one hundred and ten, number one subsection little i, action may follow. To discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions, or she discussed with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in its official capacity is or likely to become a party from public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to that agency. This subsection one little i does not permit a governing body to hold an executive session solely because an attorney representing the agency is present. For purpose of this subsection one i, potential litigation means matters protected by RPC one point six, that's rules of professional conduct, one point six, or RCW five sixty oh six oh subsection two a concerning i litigation that has been specifically threatened to which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party. We're going to adjourn for approximately fifteen minutes. Oh. Thank you. I need to turn the page. Please hold. Subsection III, litigation that the agency reasonably believes may be commenced by or against the agency, the governing body, or member acting in an official capacity, or III, litigation or legal risk of a proposed action or current practice that the agency has identified when public discussion of the litigation or legal risk is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to that agency. Now we will adjourn for twenty minutes, and if we go longer, we'll announce to the group that we will need additional. Thank you. We'll reconvene regular board meeting, the Prosser School District Board of Directors. Is there a motion to approve nomination for student board representative?
Make a motion to approve Noah Dempsey, Caitlin Morrow, and Yoshima Garcia as the student board representatives for the twenty-three twenty-four school year.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Congratulations.
And we do have oath of office for each of you. If you would like to come up. You can come all the way up. Okay. And Noah and Caitlin. So you're going to raise your right hand. I may give you yours just a second. I'm using it for Caitlin. And you will recite, and why don't we do it together? So have Noah, Caitlin, and Yoshin say your names. And we'll administer the oath.
Aye, Noah Dempsey.
Oh, I Caitlin Morrow. I Yoshin Garcia.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Washington, and will faithfully perform the duties of school board director of the Prosser School District? The one, the one, the six.
The best of my ability. Very well. Okay, I should have had you turn around to everybody then.
Yeah.
Oh.
Raise their hands.
Yes.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations. Thank you.
Welcome. Looking forward to it.
Congratulations.
Welcome back.
Thank you. We will invite the student board representatives to create a seat at the table and join the meeting. And now is the time of the agenda for the student board representatives to give a report if you would like to do so this evening.
Um. Graduation is on. It's great. Yeah, so there's the, that's graduating class of twenty twenty-three. That was really neat. So they're all for bigger and better things. That's about it.
Perfect. Thank you. Next, I will read the protocol for addressing the board, which will be followed by public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per speaker for a total of thirty minutes. There shall be no slander, no hate speech. If you are gavelled, that is the end of your speaking because you have violated the rules of no hate speech and no slander. And what I always like to emphasize is whatever you say tonight, you may have to stand behind the person you were talking about tomorrow at the grocery store. So please keep that in mind. And as we start, Ms. Eva Petrov.
Just let everyone know there, there's countdown clock up here for three minutes. It'll start with the ten second countdown with we'll beep for three, two, one, and then start in three minutes. Feel free to talk through the entire ten second start and the beeps, and then once it beeps again, then that'll tell you your time is up.
Okay.
You go ahead and start with it.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Eva Petrov, and I speak as a parent of a PHS student. My son has had an amazing freshman year due to all the experiences awarded to him by Prosser High School and the Prosser community. Whether it be working at an orphanage in Baja, attending district and state for swim, playing with the band at parades, pep rallies, state events, or even promoting the upcoming sixth grade class, we are eternally grateful for the lived experiences he was able to enjoy. Those experiences are helping to develop my son and his future. Now, while I am my son's biggest cheerleader, I am also raising a young man who must be held accountable for his actions. One of his last assessments, he scored a fourteen out of a hundred. His reasoning was that he was focusing on another assessment to support his summer adventures. My response, then you earned the right grade. A child should earn their grades, not be penalized with them. Prosser should promote every possible avenue for students to be successful, but are instead penalizing those that advance their education under the guise of employability points. As one person I spoke to when bringing my frustrations up the chain of command stated, your child needs to decide what's important to him and do that. My son had five teachers that graded employability points four different ways. It's not equitable, and it's not right. Employability points create an unemployed experience, pushing for minimal activities with students attending first period and leaving last period, enjoying nothing to foster or create the whole child. Depending on the teacher or students, our students are losing employability points for anything that takes them out of the classroom, even when they are advancing Prosser High School through sports and clubs. These points cannot be made up. I would argue employability points do the exact opposite of what their name implies. It does not make a student more employable, and it does not create an environment where a student is treating the school as a career. I have attended many professional developments to enrich my understanding of the classroom and my experience as an educator. I could not have learned half the things I did out of a book or the mouth of a teacher. What are we doing if children are told they need to decide what is important and do that, but then penalize them for making that choice? I will leave you with this. I plan on speaking at every school board meeting until this is changed, and as a parent, I will vote in the next election for Prosser School District. One voice can and should be heard. Fortunately, my voice carries. Thank you, and I'll see you at the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel Phillips.
Hello, my name is Rachel Phillips. I have seven children, two have graduated from Prosser High School, and two are currently attending Prosser High School. I come to you tonight with a heavy heart. Kyler Bockhoffner's contract was not renewed, and he was let go. My daughter Deidra is and has been on the varsity basketball team and was coached by Kyler. She was told yesterday that her coach was not invited back during her practice. Tears streamed down her face. She loved and respected Kyler. She has received nothing but love and good coaching from him. She had the honor of going to state this past year with his team, and they took third place. This group of girls now is left wondering why. They are brokenhearted and unsure of what the future will hold for them. And so I asked the district administration, can you explain to me and to those here in attendance how the decision is made to renew or terminate a coach's contract? I would hope there is a check and balance when this decision is made. Did one person make this decision or did a group? If one person made this decision, I believe that is morally wrong, and there is just cause for us to question this decision. But when someone is terminated or put on leave, no one is told why here in Prosser. Could we be at least given some reasons? We are, I'm asking for transparency. Why are things done with such secrecy? We continue to have employees resign, good employees. I wonder, why are they leaving? How are we treating our employees? Are we treating them justly and with kindness? My daughter just graduated as one of the valedictorians from Prosser High School, and in her speech, she spoke of the importance of kindness and respect. And so I ask you, was this decision made with just cause to terminate someone who has been a part of our district, been a part of our family for so long and who is very loved? I wonder what the reasons were. No one is above reproach, no matter what your position in the district is. In the end, we are all humans trying to do the next right thing. Are we doing the next right thing? Are we treating others with love and respect and treating them the way we want to be treated? We cannot teach something that we are not practicing. I love Prosser. I raise my kids here, but there is always room for growth. Are we growing or crumbling? Our efforts will be blessed if we are treating people with love and respect and trying our very best to do what is best for the employees of our district. I want to thank Kyler for all he has done for our basketball program, and I wish him only the best. I also want to thank Jessica Huntington and Toby for filling in during this time so that our girls could have the rest of their summer basketball program. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak? Erin Ferguson.
Okay, thank you. I do not have a prepared speech. I just was concerned about the fact that the employability grade that high school kids get is different in its protocol. So as a high school teacher for over twenty years in a neighboring district, it concerns me that it's not a set practice and that different teachers do it in different ways with different percentages, which then affects kids' grades in a different way. So I would definitely, for my children who are both students here at Science, or excuse me, at Prosser High School, and will continue to be and have had a great first year here, but I would like, I think it's very important that there should be a standard way of operating when it comes to grading, at least with something like that. I've reached out to a couple other districts and asked them if they have an employability grade, and it is not a standard with most schools. So it to me seems like a very unique thing that has now become a part of Prosser High School that perhaps was not here in the past, to my knowledge. And if it's going to become a part of every student's grade, it should, there should be a standard as to how it's done throughout the school versus it being done differently in separate classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Adriana Melanis. I would just ask that everyone that's, state your name.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Adriana Melanis, and I am a student here at Prosser High School. I just finished my sophomore year, and I'm looking forward to being a junior in the fall. I am also a part of the girls varsity basketball team here at PHS, who led by Kyler Bockhoffner, placed third at state the last two years. I'm not very good at public speaking, but my mom always told me to speak up on what I think is right. So that's what I'm trying to do. So please be patient and bear with me. I am up here today because our girls' basketball program had our coach, our head coach taken away from us. We had the coach that cares for us, not only as basketball players, but as human beings, taken. Kyler and our other two assistant coaches have showed me and the rest of the program what a family is. The love and support Kyler shows us during our basketball season and even during our offseason is just unbelievable. I would get texts from Kyler any time of the year asking how I'm doing, how my day was, or how I was doing in the sport I had at the time. Always rooting for me. Kyler has made these last two years in my basketball career the best I could ever ask for. He has made me confident in myself and taught me life skills like being a leader. You can tell he cares for his team more than just basketball. He's a great coach and an even better person, and I couldn't imagine playing for this school without having him as my coach. He has put so much time and effort into this team, dealing, dealing with all of us teenager, teenage girls who are very dramatic, judgmental, and full of different emotions. Kyler couldn't have handled it any better. He inspired me to become a better basketball player and a better human. Having him and his son Bryce around every day during practice was the best part of my day. Kyler, along with the other coaches, Jessica Huntington and Tamara Jones are the best coaches I've ever had, and taught me that this is more than a team, this is a family. Just hours before he found out this terrible news that his contract wasn't being renewed, he was asking and planning things like New Jerseys for our program, very excited for the new season to come. So I can say this on behalf of everyone in the program, please give us our coach back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who didn't sign up that would like to speak? We will move on to consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent item?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Action items. Vouchers and payroll. Is there a motion regarding vouchers and payroll?
I'll make a motion. Vouchers and payroll as presented.
Is there a second?
A second bit.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes. Communities and school. Is there a motion regarding communities? Communities and school. Is there a motion regarding communities and?
Make a motion, we've passed communities and school agreement.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jason. Thank you.
Under the contract, it has Matt Ellis. As, as a signature line, do we need to amend that before? Before we approve it?
This is Amy. And there is, I did put a resolution in the board packet and to delegate signature authority. If that's approved, then Danifores will have the ability to sign that. But it's up to you if you want to, if you want to hold approval on this or. If there's any concern with it, with approving that resolution.
Okay, no, that was my only question.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passive. Second reading of policy six two two five electronic use of signature. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the second reading of policy six two two five electronic use of signature.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of second reading of policy six two two five electronic use of signature? Please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passive. Second reading of policy six one one four gifts or donations. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the second reading of policy number sixty one fourteen gifts or donations.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, second reading of policy six one one four gifts or donations, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passive. Patel Grant.
Do we need a motion to accept it?
Well, is there a motion to accept the Patel Grant?
I move to accept the Tellgram.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
I did have one comment about that. For the whole lens two for computer science, that'll be with Mr. Blair. And we were actually talking about this. I have to say that this is pretty cool. It's augmented reality. It's kind of like virtual reality goggles, but they're still clear displays. It's kind of like safety goggles. But it allows you to have something on the screen. You kind of look away and you can look at it, then keep working on something. He was saying that it would really help with his computer engineering class next year. So we can work on stuff and we can have directions, just kind of looking over back and forth. It is crazy, but it sounds fun.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passive. Action item F, grade six through eight ELA adoption.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the six through eight ELA adoption. As presented.
Is there a second?
I would second.
Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. Is there anybody, I know Deanna was kind of ahead of it. Is there anybody there that could speak to it?
Yeah.
What questions you got?
So one of my main questions, will this meet the needs of our students and staff?
Yes.
And how do, how will this make our students more proficient?
So it's not just a core instruction, it is an intervention with that as well. So the students will be assessed. Currently, we use iReady three times throughout the year for benchmark. This is an ongoing constant assessment. So they'll receive core instruction and then through the groupings and the work that they do with the ongoing assessment, they'll receive targeted, specific. Individualized or small group remedial instruction as well. So it's not only moving them forward in the core instruction. At grade level, but it's also supporting any deficiencies or areas that they don't have mastered. And what we're going to have this year for our sixth grade coming in. Is we'll have all the data in a electronic system that allows us to see exactly where they left off. So we don't have some of those drop offs that you might see the waterfall effect moving between schools. We'll be able to come in, know exactly where the students are at. And begin providing targeted interventions and supports within the first couple of days of them entering the, the school year. And then that will continue all the way up through eighth grade.
Okay, couple, in addition to that. I know, you know, we do student, our school improvement plans once a year. We usually review them about December, right? December, January, somewhere in there?
Correct, yes.
Is this something that we can get, you know, like a quarterly? Or, you know, a six month review where we could see the progress that the kids are making?
Absolutely. Yeah, Deanna has been sharing with us through the, through the course of the year, the growth that we've seen at elementary. So we've been able to take a look at that and it gives you like a thirty thousand foot overview of how the whole grade level is doing. Then a smaller look or closer look at maybe at a class and then down to the specific and you can see where they were. Where they're at and then the goals, the power goals that they have. So the amount of information that's going to come from this is going to be ongoing and available to give multiple opportunities for feedback throughout the school year.
Okay, thank you. My last question is, how much of this curriculum is online?
So there is an online provided opportunity for it. There will be opportunities to read books online, but everything that's online, we have in paper or in person. So if a student were to say. Have an injury that, that requires them to be at home and they didn't bring anything home before the injury. Or if they are maybe going to be on a trip and didn't take something with them, they'll have all the materials available online. But we will have everything provided in person, paper copies. And then it will be supplemental online for readings and, and the material that way. But it's pretty much a hands-on curriculum with a secondary online if we needed that option.
Okay, so kind of as a follow-up, how would, you know, if we, if we approve this curriculum, Tony? We approve it as a, what we've seen not only in review and whatever we've seen online. How often does that get updated? And, and if it does get updated, does the board get it, do we get another chance to review the updates that come online?
The updates to the curriculum?
Yes.
Yeah, so the, there's a, a constant feedback loop. And we've been in curriculums before with mathematics and, and so we will send in information through the year and it might be maybe the way a problem. Is presented and so we'll take that and we'll do updates all the time. But if there's a major update, then I would hope that we would be able to come back and share that information with you. But from what we've understood, as they're, as they're doing the updates, it's more the smaller pieces, like maybe spelling of a word was wrong. And so there's little pieces like that, but if there's a major update, then I would think that we would need to come back and, and share that information with you guys as, as it would be a major change to the curriculum.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Danny.
No problem, thank you.
So some of the feedback, there were some concerns that it were limited.
The time.
Spanish.
Yeah.
Can you speak to that?
So Crystal was at WABE, the Washington Association of Bilingual Educators. And they actually met with people back east that are from the art company. And they are finishing up piloting a dual language, the, the component that is at K five. And I believe Crystal said that they were hoping to have that finished up by August. So our goal is they have material that is, sometimes you'll get material that is a Spanish version or translation of an English. They have. Materials and information that are authentic Spanish or whatever the language might be, but in this case, Spanish. And so that, those readings are available. We went down and visited Heights Elementary, went into one of the classes where they're doing intervention. And I think they were doing something as a project that they were researching about. Space and so some were looking at the moon, some were looking at Mars. One of the books, one of the students had was all in English, the exact same book, but with the information that was presented in Spanish. So the kids were able to have either one that worked for them. They could choose, they could go back and forth. So in the sense of, of what they have available, it's available in English and Spanish, but they're working on a dual language actual curriculum that will. Be completed around August. So that will be taking a look at that as well. So we can continue the dual language program up through the middle school.
I, I went down and reviewed both of these, the six through eight on that nine through twelve. I thought it was terrific. But as a teacher, I couldn't make a judgment. Paul, what I saw, I liked, you know?
And, and the team from Housel did meet and it was unanimous. They were in support of this and they've been, you know, working. Without a curriculum for quite some time. So this is going to be a huge support to them to be able to give them something that's consistent six eight. That they don't have to find materials for, find the Spanish version for, everything is going to be provided. So it's really going to be, and then the intervention component is going to be huge. So that, you know, being able to say, here's the program, we're going to roll it out through professional development that starts before the, the year, obviously, so they can begin. Is going to be a, a nice change and a nice support for them. No, iReady is just, we use that now as the benchmark testing and then there is an intervention piece, but we haven't been using the intervention curriculum. So this will be a curriculum change. We'll, we'll do the iReady for our benchmark because that's one that the state requires. But we'll be using the individual testing that happens every couple of weeks in addition to the iReady. So it'll be another piece of, of the puzzle. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Danny.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor of six through eight ELA adoption? Indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? No. Motion. Passive to adopt six through eight ELA adoption. Item G, nine through twelfth grade ELA adoption.
I'll make a motion to approve the nine through twelve ELA adoption as presented.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
In the packets, it's page one twenty six. So Mr. Bailey, you might be able to answer this. Looking through this, most of these are pretty positive reviews, but I did have a question. Is, what are the historical events that this individual is referring to?
So in any curriculum. Guess I'll say it this way. So when you're talking about ELA curriculum, part of that is a connection to what kids are interested in. Oftentimes in, in many classes, that comes from current events. And so this has current events in it and teachers can, can pull from media sources. And that's what it's referring to. So that particular comment was made. You also noticed that they gave it a very high score. And, you know, it's not that they didn't approve it. They approved it with reservations and as did I. Mine has reservations in it as well. That's just something that we will have to watch and we'll have to, to keep an eye on.
Any other discussion?
I have a couple of questions. And it falls along with what I've already asked, Mr. Danny. Does this meet the new needs of the students of the high school?
Yes, we believe it does.
And how will this enable? To make sure our students are proficient in ELA?
It's similar to what Mr. Denny said with, with ARC. We felt like we needed a little bit different pathway. There was, we did look into ARC as well to try and maintain a K twelve curriculum. But like iReady, iReady is geared more towards the younger population of students. And we wanted something that was, that would match the, the level of our students currently. iReady has, you know, some cartoons and, and just the platform itself was geared more towards elementary and middle school students. And we wanted to move beyond that. So one of the things that we really wanted to focus on was finding. Assessment data. That's one of our areas of weakness. I've talked about that before in terms of, of our school improvement plan. We tried to go away from iReady because the kids weren't invested in that and go to interim assessments. We found some problems with the interim assessments on a regular basis. This curriculum also does provide us with baseline testing and periodical assessments that we can give along the way. So this will provide us with the same data that is crosswalked already with state standards and we can improve our scores there. I am happy to say that our scores are improving. We, we got assessment information back. And we're happy with the growth in ELA specifically, and we hope to see that continue. So we're getting closer to where we were pre-COVID and we hope to, to. To leapfrog a bit and, and gain some serious ground. So we think this will be it. I don't know if they've been released fully yet, so I don't know if I can say that.
What type of staff buy-in did you get with the new program?
Actually, this was much like Mr. Denny's. This was a unanimous vote for this particular curriculum.
Nice to hear.
Yeah.
That's what we want.
Yeah.
Any other questions, questions?
Yeah, one last one real quick. Will this have the similar metrics to ARC? And is there a way we can get more real-time data than waiting a, a year out to see what our previous year did?
Yes, it does. It has, it has similar. It's just a different, it's just a different platform than ARC. So it will look a little bit different, but we can present that in a similar way. So that you're not trying to, to interpret. So yes, it does and we can.
Thank you.
There's a motion and a second. All, all in favor of the nine through twelve ELA adoption indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that grade nine through twelve ELA adoption is passed. Item H, resolution zero seven two three designation of auditing officers. And Amy, would you like to discuss that?
And so this was actually a form they found, I think, on the cluster or something that. We never did a resolution to give them even me and the ability to be the official auditing officer. So this will catch up, this will add me to that. And then also adds Deanna Flores and a signature authority specifically as the auditing officer. There is a second one because it was more specific, you know, the overarching and signature authority as we can find it while she's acting. Until we can get it in, in place. And with this one as the auditing officer. It may or may not exist. That just depends on how you want from the board, the board perspective. But I think it's extremely important that we have signature authority in place that we can keep this going along until we can get it in.
This is a resolution, so I'll ask for a motion, a second, and then we will vote by roll call. Is there a motion to approve resolution zero seven twenty three designation of auditing officers?
I'll make a, go ahead. I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve resolution number zero seven twenty three. Designation of auditing officers as presented.
Is there a second? Thank you. Okay, roll call. Jeannie?
Aye.
Peggy?
Aye, yes.
Anthony?
Aye.
Jason?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yeah.
Resolution zero seven two three designation of auditing officers is approved. Item I, resolution zero eight twenty three delegation of signature authority.
So this is the one that's kind of the overarching for Danifores to be able to sign anything on behalf of the secret.
Okay. Same, same process? Thank you.
I'll make a motion. We approve resolution zero eight dash two three delegation of signature authority as presented.
There a second?
A second.
Okay. And roll call. Jeannie?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Alyssa? Yes. Resolution zero eight two three delegation of signature authority is approved. Item J, resolution zero nine two three transportation surplus revised.
I missed the resolution the first time, so that's when it was revised. Then we added one. Item as well. So these are all the, the buses and vehicles and I think there's a lower on there involved, things that we're just trying to. To get rid of the things that are broken and not have them sitting around. So this will just start the process upon approval and then we'll post them for, you know, for any other entities to want to grab them up. And then we'll actually sell them or we might go up for bid for some of them, but this is just the first step to be able to import the data.
Same process as the last two items. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number zero nine twenty three transportation surplus as revised.
A second?
Second the motion.
Roll call. Jeannie?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Alyssa? Yes. Resolution zero nine two three transportation surplus revised. Is approved. Moving to reports. Business manager report.
Um, our audit is still not complete. I'm glad to inform you that. And there was a delay, so I know I've mentioned it a few times, but just to reiterate one more time, and the emergency connectivity fund, there's, um, a lot of. Statewide angst about that, and across the nation, you know, there's maybe a couple dozen findings over the entire nation. Washington alone is looking at over sixty findings, um, across different districts. And so it is, it's just, I think, I don't know if they're just trying to take it slower or really look at these findings. I'm not sure what the reason is. But our auditors will be on, on Friday, um, and so we'll have the chance to discuss that. Hopefully they'll actually have a, an official finding for us to respond to. Uh, unfortunately, I don't think we can get out of it, um. I still feel like the district did what we should have done in that we were not at fault, I said, at far, at fault. At fault for what it should have been. It's an unmet need. We gave the, the Chromebooks to the students who needed them. Um, but unfortunately, we didn't meet the letter of the law, how the auditor is interpreting it. So anyways, that's where we are. And I will give official updates once I have more and then they're also gonna be starting the ASB audit. And so that one did have that federal, uh, federal deadline, and so that's why it got official a little bit, but hopefully we can wrap that up. I'm just working on that and.
Thank you. I don't think we have an assistant superintendent or superintendent, so we'll move to board reports. Jeannie?
Okay. I'm, I'm not sure if I mentioned this last time. I don't think so. Jason and I were both at the PAC graduation program. As usual, it was a lot of fun and we were honored by getting to be in the congratulatory line. But, um, the PAC group had forty-one graduates this year, uh, for those that aren't aware. That's the parental advisory committee for the bilingual, um. Migrant program. It, it's a lot of fun. I enjoy it. Fellowship night, June fifth. I can't say enough. Wow, we have smart kids at the high school. Thank you. Uh, graduation, the tenth, always an honor. I think it is probably the biggest perk of our jobs, getting to do that. And, uh, tomorrow is the leadership banquet for Thrive and I think we're gonna have three board members there. And they're very pleased about that. It's always a nice program also, and that's it.
Peggy?
Well, um, I wasn't able to make it to graduation. It was my fifty-fifth class reunion. And so, um, it was a struggle to decide which one to attend, but I did, I did attend my fifty-fifth. And, um, I will be at the Thrive tomorrow, so I'm looking forward to that.
Anthony?
Nothing new to report.
Jason?
Yeah, just, uh, kinda ditto what Jeannie said about the PAC graduation and graduation, both great events. Uh, proud of those kids. Uh, one thing I'd, I'd like to put on our radar is just, um, we have a policy thirty-two twenty-six that has no procedure. Um. It was supposed to get one. I'm not sure how that got missed, but I would like, uh, to make sure that procedure's in place. But at least, uh, for us to review by the first meeting in July, even though we don't approve them, it would be nice to have that, uh. Uh, ready to go for next year. Um, and with that, that's all I got. So thank you.
I went to, I guess, triple, triple talk about graduation. It was wonderful. I'm gonna thank Mr. Bailey. Annika and Latisha, who did a lot of organization. I think the sound issue, um, there was anyone that didn't know. Um, there was a major, a major sound issue that was handled. So while, um, the sound was able to come back, I wanted to thank Mr. Bailey for having the kids whose speeches were interrupted by the sound come back. And speak, you know, that was their big moment, the accumulation of their education career in Prosser and their parents, their family there. And I think, I'm just really appreciative you had them come back and speak. And I thought, um, everybody working on the sound, I think ultimately everything was disconnected and reconnected, um, turned it off, turned it back on again. But perhaps we need to examine and look at replacing the sound system, which seems not, um, very modern. And we don't wanna have that happen again at graduation or any other events. Um, so if we could, I know our budget's tight, but I think it's important. It's how we look at the community. And then I was also wondering if there was an update, if the track and tennis, um, items had gone to bid.
And so the advertisement is out.
Wonderful.
And the bids are due next week.
Great.
And so we'll have time to review those and get them to you at the next board meeting, on the twenty eighth. Sorry, um, for the, for the, the tennis courts. The track and the Housel Middle School, um, chiller. We did not move forward with the old high school chiller at this time. And it's just much more complex and we think there might be some other opportunities there, so we did not, um, put that one up for bid. But right now with getting the middle school, taking care of with kids coming back in the fall. And we felt that was more, it was more important to get that one going and then we got the, the tennis courts and that. Track one out, so. We will have that for you in between.
Very good. All right. Any, anything else?
I'll make a quick question.
Sure.
Turn in our notes on our.
Yes, yes. Let's give, turn in your notes, please, to Selena. All right. Hearing nothing else, our next board meeting will be June twenty-first, the Prosser High School Library Work Room. There'll be a work session, a study session at seven PM. You are adjourned.
Thank you.